But it doesn't stop there. CRA LA has been working in greater Hollywood to create affordable housing for families. Next to a childcare center developed with the CRA is an affordable townhome complex currently under construction.
The Pasquale Reyes Townhomes contain thirteen units. They're all four bedrooms. They're designed for large families of low income and they're gonna be there. They contain approximately two and a half bathrooms. This project would have not got off the ground because CRA had the money and the expertise to assemble a line and hold the project together until the community decided what to put on there.
And CRA LA is also working with some innovative developers on a pioneering affordable housing complex called the Pico Gramercy Housing Project.
What we've got here is seventy-one units, all deeply affordable.
But what makes this project so unique is the supportive services provided for these seventy-one families.
Because there's a need for students to have academic learning after normal school hours in a safe environment close to home, this facility will allow students to spend from three to four hours, four nights a week, in a tutorial program and a computer learning lab.
As someone who grew up in this area, I'm glad to see it happening. I'm glad to see it happening in a positive sense.
And because the CRA was involved in this project, the two-hundred construction jobs...
They're rated at a union rate, which is a prevailing rate. So whereas some people are making seven, eight bucks an hour, most of these individuals are making over twenty-eight dollars an hour.
With the help of the CRA, we quickly discovered that this bureaucracy not only wasn't the classic one we feared, but helped us get through some of the other ones.
Now with the push for increased density in our urban centers, CRA LA has been combining its mission of job growth and affordable housing into mixed-use and transit-oriented complexes in the Hollywood and Central Region.
The project that's taking place on the metro station at MacArthur Park is one of several mixed-use transit-oriented developments that we're doing along the Red Line. We're very excited about increasing the density of the land intensity and the density of housing near metro portals. Our goal is to create jobs and to create housing close to transit.
So in the case of the land above the Westlake-MacArthur Park metro station, the CRA is working with a private developer to build a 100 percent affordable, transit-oriented urban village.
We're looking to take the area around the plaza and build a mixed-use development. We'll have built about two-hundred units. A hundred and thirty-eight of those will be for families and the other sixty-one will be for seniors. And we'll have about fifty-two thousand four hundred square feet of retail. People here can live, work, play, and pray right here from this very spot.
But Westlake-MacArthur Park is not the only mixed-use project going up in Los Angeles. The CRA is working with public and private partners to develop one of the most original, transit-oriented, mixed-use projects at Wilshire and Vermont.
What we were able to do here is working with the CRA, obtain a very large allocation of affordable housing bonds, and that covers about ninety percent of the cost. The Community Redevelopment Agency, Los Angeles City, MTA, the private developer Urban Partners, and the Los Angeles Unified School District, working together so there could be a common vision for this site. A subway portal.
Yes, if you can believe it, this mixed-use project will be the home of a public school.
On this site is going to be a very unique middle school. I say it's unique because it's going to be a vertical school. We've worked to have on top of the subway portal a school.
But it will also be home to both retail establishments and city dwellers.
The fundamental elements of this project are residential and retail. The residential is four-hundred-and-forty-nine units of rental housing, of which twenty percent will be specially priced to be designated as affordable.
And a complex of this size will be infusing some serious job growth into the region.
There'll be about thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-person years of employment created during the development of this project. And then on a permanent basis, we estimate about a hundred and seventy-five permanent jobs.
The Community Redevelopment Agency has, in a sense, been a cheering squad for all of us in the community that are interested in mixed-use development and affordable housing.
And the CRA cheering section for transit-oriented, mixed-use development with affordable housing in greater Hollywood marches on at Hollywood and Vine.
The CRA actually has a financial stake in this matter, and they've been very instrumental in the documentation and entitlement process of moving this project through the city.
We'll be assisting with land acquisition. We also are contributing about four million to five million dollars in land costs for the project.
So what exactly is on tap for the Hollywood and Vine project?
This site is actually four-point-six acres. It incorporates a historic building on the corner of Hollywood and Vine. It also has an MTA portal and plaza that actually connects to the Red Line.
The Hollywood and Vine project consists of a W hotel, three-hundred-room hotel, and condominium complex is associated with the hotel. It also includes three-hundred-and-seventy-five rental apartment units. With about eighty affordable housing units in the project, there's also about sixty-thousand square feet of ground-floor retail to serve the community.
So thanks to pioneering partnerships between CRA LA and its many public and private partners, Hollywood is back better than ever.
Hollywood is one of the great shining examples of what the CRA can do. The work of the CRA in partnering with business owners, with neighborhood activists, with residents, in looking at how we could transform a community that was blighted and create new opportunities for the entire city has been great.
And as CRA LA celebrates its twentieth year of a forty-year plan to redevelop Hollywood, don't think the CRA's work is done in the region. In fact, there are seven distinct project zones within the Hollywood and Central Region: East Hollywood, Hollywood, Mid-City Corridors, Pico Union One, Pico Union Two, Westlake, and Wilshire Center Koreatown, that will continue to receive CRA LA's attention in the coming years.
Aside from the developments that you see that are under construction that you hear a lot about, there are some projects that are, we're looking into the future, and we're very excited about. Chief among those is the Academy of Motion Pictures Museum. And we are so delighted, we're thrilled, that they chose Hollywood. It will have a positive effect on the Hollywood community years into the future.
Now the Ampus Museum is expected to be completed by 2011, a fitting exclamation point as Hollywood looks back to the future as it fuels its Renaissance.
With the subway system and the development at Hollywood and Vine, and Hollywood and Highland, and the Cinerama Dome, and now with the Academy of Motion Pictures moving in and placing a world-class museum here, the Hollywood of the future is going to be even more exciting than the Hollywood of the thirties even was.
The Community Redevelopment Agency for the City of Los Angeles looks forward to continuing its drive to revitalize our great city while helping to expand economic growth and affordable housing for all Angelenos. If you should have any questions about the Community Redevelopment Agency, you can always log on to CRA LA's website at www.cra.la.org. On behalf of the Community Redevelopment Agency for the City of Los Angeles, my name is Brad Palmerance. Thank you for watching.
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
And the award-winning L.A. City View Channel 35. It's all about L.A. In L.A. this week, travelers can expect tighter security at LAX and other U.S. airports.
Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang.
L.A. Update is the nation's first daily newscast on a municipal station.
Hello, I'm Ellen Chang with your L.A. update. Here's what's making news in the city on this Friday.
Last month, the city's animal cruelty task force seized seventeen fighting dogs.
Talk shows at Talk the Talk.
Welcome to L.A. Roundtable.
Welcome to Council Week in Review.
I'm Mary Grady for the Los Angeles Police Department.
Hi, I'm Brad Palmerance, and welcome to the Neighborhood Cafe.
With over a dozen original series programs for city departments.
Luckily, they diffused it. There were like something like twenty-five squad cars there.
Award-winning PSAs.
Call to the rise!
Save it, buddy. The ball call.
The average car weighs six thousand pounds. The average bicycle with rider weighs one-hundred-and-seventy pounds, give or take a few. And if the two collide, bug splatter.
Live gavel-to-gavel city council meetings and commission coverage.
Now it's time for general public comment. All of these are items that are not formally on our agenda.
Recognizing a cargo theft has been a crime that would impact the free flow of commerce within the Port of Los Angeles.
Thought-provoking, historical and cultural programming.
The Los Angeles basin was the most prolific agricultural area within America.
When William first arrived and saw the dry, dusty little town, population nine-thousand, he was not impressed. Live events as they're happening, seen only on L.A. City View Channel 35.
You can see the dignitaries are arriving from forty-three countries. And we see the Secretary of State Warren Christopher.
Welcome to your L.A. FD in action.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to City Works.
The EAD is also making it possible for agencies such as the Park Rangers and others to purchase bicycles to use in self-patrol operations.
My name is Jeanette Bolden. I am the Women's Head Track and Field Culture, UCLA.
Shows with impact that will affect your life.
Hanging with the homies, slinging drugs, doing drugs, doing time.
We are awaiting the arrival of Mr. Huesar, Mr. Caress, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Smith, so we can begin the meeting. We will begin the meeting as soon as we have a quorum. We are awaiting the arrival of Mr. Huesar, Mr. Caress, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Smith. We are at seven members. We need three more members to begin the meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Huesar. We are now at eight members. We need two members to begin the meeting. Mr. Caress, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith. Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Caress, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Smith, please join us in the chamber as quickly as possible so that we can begin our meeting. Good morning, Don Bailey. It's a pleasure to see you. Okay, we need two more members to begin the meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. We are at nine members. We need one member to begin the meeting. We are awaiting the arrival of either Mr. Caress, Mr. Krikorian, or Mr. Reyes so that we can begin the meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. The meeting is going to be called to order. Welcome to City Hall and the Los Angeles City Council chambers. And this is a meeting of the City of Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, December eighth, 2010. Council meets three times per week, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public, and for those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised by cable on Channel 35, or can be viewed by visiting our website. The meeting is now in session. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Cardiniss Han, Huesar, Caress, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, West, and Zion, Garcetti, twelve members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Huesar moves. Mr. Cardiniss seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zion moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Madam President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes.
Items one through fifteen are items noticed for public hearing. Item fourteen is a PCN in Council District Twelve. A recommendation is required to grant or deny the people, excuse me, the appeal.
And which council district is that located?
Council District Twelve.
Council District Twelve. All right. Mr. Smith, do you want to call that one special?
We have twenty-four dollars.
Is there a card on that matter?
No, there is not.
All right, well...
Madam President, we do not have any cards on one through fifteen.
All right, well then, I'll open the roll on those items. Okay, move to grant, all right. Why don't we take that one up right now?
Recommendation and grant the public convenience.
All right, let's open the roll on Mr. Smith's item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And then let's open the roll on the remainder of those items, one through fifteen. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Items sixteen through thirty-four are items for which public hearings have been held. Relative to item sixteen, the results of the ballot tabulation for the South Los Angeles Industrial Track Business Improvement District are as follows: Fifty-six-point-six percent were in support, and forty-three-point-four percent were opposed. The proposed assessment may be authorized, and the subject ordinance may be adopted. Lastly, there is a request to call item eighteen forthwith.
All right, why don't we open the roll on eighteen first? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item will go forthwith. Any other specials members? Mr. Parks?
Item thirty-four special. And then also would like to give an instruction on items thirty and thirty-one. If we could merge those two files and ask for this one report addressing both of those files, and have it at Budget and Finance in the first meeting of January.
All right, why don't we open the roll on items thirty and thirty-one? Mr. Clerk, right now, merge those two and ask for a report back to Budget and Finance Committee.
Madam President, for clarification, are we referring the matter back to Budget and Finance?
We're approving it, but we're, both motions ask for a report back. And we're saying merge the report into one, and have it, and both of them have two different reporting times. And we're saying have the reporting time, the first budget meeting in January.
All right, open the roll on that. Thirty and thirty-one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, next item?
Do you want to take up the remainder of them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's take up the balance and then open the roll on those.
Madam President, would you like to take up the balance of the items between sixteen and thirty-four?
Yes. We can open, open, are there cards on any of those items?
Public hearing has been held.
Okay.
Maybe there's specials members.
Any specials members? No one is rising for specials, so we will open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Madam President, items thirty-five through thirty-nine are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, any specials members? Are there any cards on any of those items?
No.
No cards?
Madam President, yes, there is. We have cards on thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
All right, so those items will be called special. And I'd like to open the roll on the remainder of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Mr. Clerk, I believe we need to open the, do we need to recess and then go into the special agenda?
Very good, Madam President. Yes, we do.
All right.
First, let's call the roll, then for the special meeting, Alarcon, Cardiniss Han, Huesar, Caress, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, West, and Zion, Garcetti, thirteen members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Mr. Zion, would you please take the chair for momentarily?
Mr. Clerk, we're now in the special.
Very good, sir. Item forty is an item for which a public hearing has been held. A committee report has been submitted and distributed to council.
Number forty, Ms. Perry.
Get over here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to have a very brief public hearing on this item, allowing five minutes for each side. And after the public hearing, I would like for the Planning Department to present their report. Then I'll speak again if necessary, but let me just say very briefly, I am speaking in support of the Fast Food General Plan Amendment and hope that you will support us, support Mr. Parks and myself. I'd also like to commend Faisal Roble and Jason Chan from the City Planning Department for their excellent work on this item. I also like to thank all of the community members who have worked on this effort, particularly the Community Health Councils and the California Food Policy Advocates. Just as a technical amendment, I would like to make a motion amending the General Plan Amendment to strike criteria number four regarding the 30% minimum lot coverage. This item needs to be removed because it could have the unintended consequence of a mega-sized fast food restaurant in order to avoid the General Plan Amendment application and fee. I would also like to make an amendment to clarify the intent of exempting demolitions of existing fast food restaurants and remodels. Complete rebuilds on existing sites should not be subject to a square footage limitation. As presented, the Fast Food General Plan Amendment will implement design guidelines for the development of new fast food restaurants, renovations of existing fast food restaurants, and preserve the restaurant in South Los Angeles for other uses that are not over-concentrated. The General Plan Amendment does not apply, and I want everybody to hear this, the General Plan Amendment does not apply to fast food restaurants that are integrated into buildings or shopping centers with other uses. Other parts of the city, such as Westwood, have a specific plan that regulates the design of fast food restaurants. However, no such planning tool has ever existed in South or Southeast Los Angeles. In concert with my colleague Bernard Parks, we've been working together on the issue of over-concentration of fast food establishments in South and Southeast Los Angeles. And in May 2007, we introduced a motion calling on the Planning Department to develop an interim control ordinance that would establish a process where new standalone fast food establishments required a review through a project permit. The Planning Department responded to our motion with great skill, and for two years the interim control ordinance was in effect. It expired September 14, 2010, and since then, we have been working in partnership with the Planning Department, community stakeholders, and the restaurant industry to develop this Fast Food General Plan Amendment. The over-concentration of fast food restaurants in South LA is a real issue. The General Plan Amendment addresses the over-concentration by requiring a half-mile radius from any existing standalone fast food restaurant and a new fast food restaurant. This is an important tool because it will preserve the few remaining parcels of land that can be developed in South Los Angeles for uses that are scarce, such as grocery stores. And you're going to hear more about that later. Banks, sit-down restaurants. The General Plan Amendment is well-balanced, and it does take into account input we receive from the restaurant industry, including the California Restaurant Association regarding renovations and additions to existing stores while preserving the design guidelines. Specifically, renovations, additions up to 1,000 square feet, and demolitions of existing fast food establishments are exempt from the half-mile radius. This exemption will allow renovations and remodels to go forward without a General Plan Amendment application, which costs $22,000 and could have acted as a disincentive to reinvestment if not addressed. The general planning tool is an important planning tool for South Los Angeles. It will give us, the city, the necessary tools to ensure that future development will be designed in a thoughtful manner. For example, the General Plan Amendment will require that trash receptacles are enclosed with a six-foot-high masonry wall and that a minimum 7% of the total area of the surface parking lot is landscape. May not seem like a lot to some people, but it is a big deal in terms of transforming the landscape and the look of a community. These are simple, smart design features that I think merit your support, and I hope that you will vote yes on our General Plan Amendment as amended. Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Parks. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Reyes, did you have a comment? I know your button was pushed and it came off.
But, Councilman, I just wanted to share with my colleagues that Councilman Krikorian and I sat through committee. We heard the presentations. It became very clear is that we see two colleagues working diligently for three years, addressing the notion of how we maintain a business-friendly environment while attending to the health needs that are very real in this part of the city, that for too long has been neglected by the planning police powers and planning tools that speak to quality of life issues. And here we have a planning department who is able to implement these tools with the objective of changing the built-out environment, how an area looks, how it feels, making it desirable to be on the sidewalks, to engage restaurants, while attending to the issue of what is healthy, what is diverse, and making it compatible to residential areas around these commercial corridors. So my hat goes out to the planning department for their hard work. And I believe we moved this forward for the simple reason that we need to maintain a balance. And I think with the amendments that were proposed, that we've achieved the balance and not make it so onerous to the property owners who want to expand and improve upon their existing facilities. So that's the reason why we moved with an aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. If you're here to speak on a matter, you must fill out a card and have that card turned in before that item is called. We are now on special number 40. So the cards that are turned on number 40, we will bring forward now. Arnold Sachs. Mr. Labange?
Could I have 21, 24, 25, 27, and 28 forthwith?
Can't do it right now. We're in a special. You have to wait till we come out of the special, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I was following the City Attorney's advice.
Our first speaker, Arnold Sachs.
Sorry.
Following Mr. Sachs, there'll be Tanisha Wright.
Okay. But you should say, no, 5 and 5.
Just thank you. Good morning.
5 and 5. We're 5 and a 5 on each side. Go ahead, Mr. Sachs.
Thank you. Good morning. Arnold Sachs, a wonderful presentation by Honest Jan Perry. But what really caught my ear was when she brought up the fact that they have a program in West, on the West Side regarding the buildings, the standalone nature of the restaurants, and what that refers to and how that refers to the item that she brought up regarding restaurants that are built within a marketplace or multiple-use structure. Because there are two different things, standalone restaurants in Westwood and restaurants as part of a multiple-use building site. So maybe you need to pay attention to what is being said and listen very closely because it's your future.
Tanisha Wright? You'll have one minute on these matters. We're going to do the balance of time so it's fair to all, so you have one minute to speak. Aurora Lopez is our final speaker after Ms. Wright.
Thank you. My name is Tanisha Wright. I am the community liaison with Community Health Councils, and I am here in full support of the amendment to the existing general plan. South LA residents in general experience the highest rates of obesity and diabetes in LA County. The rate of obesity among children in South LA is 28% compared to 17% of obesity among children in West LA and 23% for children in all of the county. We were actually very much responsible in putting together a town hall specifically for this item. We sat down with residents. We gave out a survey. We sat down with residents to get an idea of what they wanted as far as fast food in their areas. And 75, 70% of the respondents indicated that they eat fast food and cost and time were cited as a top of the reasons. 80% of respondents indicated that finding healthy meals at all the restaurants they go to in their community is either hard or very hard. So I'm just here on speaking to you today on behalf of this, and I definitely want to thank Bernard Parks and Perry for supporting this.
Thank you. Aurora Lopez?
Good morning. My name is Aurora Lopez. I am a community liaison, public health nurse. From 1997 to 2007, I worked at South Health Center treating people with tuberculosis infection. At that time, I noticed that despite increased efforts to teach about nutrition and physical activity, my patients continued to gain weight and an unhealthy amount of weight. In 2007, as a public health nurse working in the community, I became more aware of barriers to healthy living. The neighborhoods in South LA lack markets where families have access to healthy options. In their places, one can find liquor stores that serve as convenience stores that sell low-quality food items and junk food. Additionally, some areas of South Los Angeles have high densities of fast food outlets where the majority of food, of menu items, are high in carbohydrates, fats, sodium, and sugars. In comparisons to other areas of the county, the people in South LA report the lowest intake of fresh fruits and vegetables and the highest intake of fast food and sugar-sweetened beverages. The result is that almost 30% of our children in grades 5, 7, and 9 are overweight, and 40% of the adults are overweight or obese. Obesity is linked to chronic preventable health conditions, including diabetes, hypertension, heart disease, stroke, arthritis, and cancers.
Thank you. Gwendolyn Flynn? Gwendolyn Flynn. Is there a Gwendolyn Flynn in the chambers? Gwendolyn Flynn.
Good morning, all. I'm Gwendolyn Flynn. I'm with Community Health Councils, and I'm here in support of the amendment to the general plan. I want to impress upon you the health implications on this decision that you make today. It was already referenced, the fact that folks are being impacted by this adversely by not having resources available to them that help them make healthy choices. So expansion of nutrition options in the South Los Angeles region is crucial to reducing the disproportionately high rates of obesity and other preventable food-related chronic diseases. Death rates are just as alarming as those statistics that you heard recently. Diabetes death rate is about 38% in South Los Angeles versus 12% in West Los Angeles. And the same is true around coronary heart disease. These health outcomes correlate to the availability of the food resources that are available, and it's not simply a personal behavior situation. It's a matter of access, and you have an opportunity to enact policies that will increase access.
Laverne Lewis.
We ask for your affirmative vote.
Thank you. Laverne Lewis. Again, you have one minute. Laverne Lewis? So please oblige by that time one minute.
Good morning. It's Levana Lewis, and I'm here, you've already heard about the health consequences. I just want to ask you to think about, from the provider's side, we're part of a health sector that basically is holding people accountable, paying more for being obese or overweight. We're asking people to participate and asking doctors to hold their patients accountable for particular health outcomes. And so in our communities, people are seen as non-compliant because they're not following doctors' recommendations. And we're saying that part of the reason they're not following those recommendations is because the community won't support them in those healthy options. So please, I fully support the restaurant amendment because, again, people are eating outside the home, and they need healthy options outside the home. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Gaydial. Laura Gaydial. Your last name, ma'am?
Gayz, G-A-Z-D-C-I-A.
G-A-Y-D-Y.
Riches and rehears for the Public Health Department, working in South LA. Access to good nutrition is effective at time of community that one person lives. Either you can walk safely to a near-full-service market or you drive to it. In other safe areas such as South LA, a person do not have access to these high-quality fresh foods because full-service markets are not in walking distance, neither person may have private transportation. In an area of 28.3% of households living in poverty, unless 100% of the federal poverty level, even taking public transportation is not an option due to many being one-parent families. City councilmen and councilwomen, I'm here to ask you to join me in helping us improve health outcomes in South LA by permitting more businesses that provide access to good-priced, high-quality foods to open for business. Thank you for listening.
Hold on. Ms. Benton, you're not going to speak? Is Ms. Benton here? Is that you?
Yes, I am, but I wasn't.
You're waiving your time? Okay. Thank you very much. Frank Tamborello?
I'm Frank Tamborello here from Hunger Action LA. And we're all in favor of, you know, having food sources for people, but why can't they be healthy ones? In the case of the fast food ordinance, South LA took a tremendous community responsibility and decided, as a community, that we're going to do something about their own health issues. So while I know that some of the industry folks are here saying, and they're going to be talking about jobs, well, jobs are good, but why do they always have to be at unhealthy places? We want healthy food in the neighborhood. Why would people be so anxious to stop this ordinance? Why are they so nervous? Because the community has become aware of its own health issues and is standing up and doing something about it. We all know about the food deserts and obesity and everything, but in this case, I think we have to respect the wishes of the community and continue to restrict fast food in the area where the community wants it to be restricted.
Marie Elise DeMarco.
Hi. Actually, I think I have the wrong agenda number. I'm here to speak on behalf and support of Fresh &amp; Easy. So can I get my thing back?
You want what?
I have the wrong agenda number. I'm here to speak on behalf of Fresh &amp; Easy.
Oh.
We're not there yet.
All right. That's another agenda number.
That's 34.
That's number 34. You need to fill out a
Thank you.
Card for 34, please. I don't have the card anymore. Okay. Marie Elise DeMarco. That was you. So we're going to change that to 34.
Okay. Give it to me. I'll put it in there.
All right. There you go. We got a lot of cards up here, folks. Lark Galloway Gilliam, that's our final speaker on this matter. And then we will go back to Mr. Labange.
Yes, good morning, members of the council. My name is Lark Galloway Gilliam. I'm the Executive Director of Community Health Council. We're a health policy, health advocacy organization in South Los Angeles, trying to work to create a healthier community. We've given you a packet today to show the fast food restaurants and see the 8, 9, and 10. You can see from that display, we have more fast food restaurants than we have schools. This is not about banning restaurants. This is about making sure that we are not bombarded and oversaturated. This is about creating responsible public policy. The jobs in these, in this industry turn over at least twice a year. This is a place of temporary employment, valuable to our young people, but is not the career path that we feel we are looking for. We encourage you to help us build a healthier community by adopting this ordinance and making sure that we have the same kind of access to healthy food that other communities enjoy. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange passes. Mr. Parks? Mr. Parks, you're the only speaker on the queue. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a very important issue that I'm certainly going to thank Ms. Perry for coming forth with it. In the communities that we represent, as has been stated, 70% of the restaurants in our community are fast food restaurants. They have been able for years to build on, by right, on almost all of our major intersections and transportation corridors. We have at least 12 ways to eat a hamburger in South Los Angeles. We have very few ways to eat in a sit-down restaurant and have alternatives for food and healthy food. One of the things I think is important as a backdrop is that our community also represents about 60% do not have health care. We lead the county in childhood obesity. We lead the county in childhood diabetes. We lead the county in obesity in general. And so these are things that are all related and driven by food, and it's something that if we do not give people the options to find healthy food, that will continue. And so we're looking in the fact that this ICO has been in place for over two years. The only reason that we're having this hearing today is that there was a gap between the ICO and the community plans being updated. When the community plans, because of budget concerns, were delayed, this item now will
the community plans, because of budget concerns, were delayed, this item now was without an ordinance. So that's when planning came forward and put it as a footnote on the existing community plans, so it will be a part of the community plans when they're updated. And so this is something that I think is so important, in the fact that the communities here, a variety of people in many instances that may not agree on other things, have come together about the health and welfare of their community. And so I look forward that we get an aye vote on this so we can move forward. It's also part of the larger issue for the community and the reason that we're pushing so hard on secondhand smoke. The eighth and ninth district leads the city in smokers and secondhand smoke and asthma, and also the fact that we're an older community. We lead the city in lead-based paint and dealing with a variety of things. So these are all health issues for our community that we want to solve them. And what we've found over the last several decades is that the planning mechanisms and tools in our city have not been transported to South Los Angeles. You will find much of the planning has been done on the west and the north, and this is an unfortunate process that the city has ignored a large part of the city. So we'd ask for an aye vote on this and move it forward with Ms. Perry's amendment to make sure that we can continue to provide through our zoning laws, not by right, but by a community process, and to look at density and a variety of things that are necessary before another fast-food restaurant is built.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry, do you have anything else? Okay. On that matter, folks, time to vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Thank you very much. Ms. Perry? I couldn't hear you. Ms. Perry?
I said, "Thank you," everybody from Council District Eight and Council District Nine. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Means a great deal to us. A great deal.
We appreciate that. And for the folks that are here in the chambers, thank you for coming today for this very important matter. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item forty-one, which is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Item number four-one.
Correct. Forty-one. Four-one.
Are we back in the regular meeting now?
Number forty-one. The first is Mr. Albert Lawrence. Albert Lawrence, he's waving. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Jessica Jones. Ms. Jones. Mr. Weisar, there's only about four cards on this matter.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. I want to speak in support of this motion. As somebody who works at the Food Bank, I work at the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, we have seen a sharp increase in the amount of demand that our organizations are requesting. People need food right now, and they need it badly. Our organizations are falling behind, though. We distribute over a million pounds of food a week, and it's not meeting the needs. So anything that we can do to help increase the number of donations that we're getting, we'd love to see that happen. We've got some great partners right now, and we're always looking for more. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Recently, you passed a couple of ordinances to make LA more business-friendly. I believe that you're giving preference to businesses in LA with a ten percent contract, where they get extra points for being in LA. So maybe you could apply some of that logic to businesses that donate surplus food and be business-friendly that way, where if you donate the food, you get a break in the city, in your city costs somehow. That you're expanding the idea of businesses that hire LA workers, city workers, people that live in the city, you're expanding on that idea by saying, "Well, if you donate food to these, um, these community outreach programs, we will, we will use that as an assessment when we figure in the cost of your business and what you pay the city." And for the people who are brand-new here, you really need to pay attention. One of the other things that you might notice here, educate you here a little bit, when they vote for these items, not voting counts. You may watch this on TV, but you don't see that process. You'll see a tote board on your TV screen. But if you watch in the chambers now, not voting will count. You'll hear them call a twelve-o vote when twelve people don't vote.
Frank Tamburello. And Mr. Weisar, that is our final speaker on this matter.
Good morning again. This is the day for food issues, I guess. This ordinance, the surplus food ordinance, is a common sense way to approach both environmental and hunger issues. And LA stands to be a model city for the rest of the country and maybe even the rest of the world. This may be the first city I know of that has actually a policy where the municipal facilities donate to food banks. There's five million tons of food wasted in California each year, so this is as much an environmental issue as it is a hunger issue. We know that Albertson's, Kroger, and a lot of the other big agencies are already donating. The Convention Center is donating a lot of its food. We just had a press conference about that this morning. And so we look really forward to working with the city on the next phase of the project, which is getting the private sector to donate and make information on how to donate food easily available to the public through the 3-1-1 line. So just want to commend everyone on this, and hopefully this will just fly through. And I like Arnold's idea about tying some kind of incentive to it. In fact, I think it should be taken into account when people are applying for CRA credits. Businesses downtown, you know, we have a lot of homelessness and poverty downtown, and so maybe donating food should be a requirement for CRA credits for, you know, some of the new high-end restaurants and bars and places like that that are locating in areas where things are being gentrified. Thank you.
Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, this is an adoption of a policy for the City of Los Angeles that all departments will now have internal policies on what they will do with any surplus food they have. This is in response to a motion that myself and Councilmember Coretts put in about five months ago. And this is pretty exciting because we know, given the financial times that we are in, given the increase in food insecurity that we've witnessed these last few years, there's a greater need out there for people to have food. And what we're doing today is asking all our departments to follow what the LA Convention Center has been doing for years. They already have a policy in place where they donate food to food banks and food pantries that need the food. And it's quite simple. All these departments need to do in this policy is put any food that qualifies aside, and these food pantries and food banks will come and pick up the food. We hope that in the future, in the City of LA and throughout the country, actually, that we view donating food, surplus food, the way we view recycling right now. When the idea of recycling came about, we didn't quite know what it meant. We said, "What should we recycle? What shouldn't we recycle? Where do we go to recycle?" Hopefully, in the future, we will know and be more informed and educated about what food we can donate, and we have an infrastructure in place to do so. This is a good thing for the city, and hopefully after the city gets better at this, we're going to put more effort in asking our friends in the private sector to do so as well. For example, right now, we're working with the Community Redevelopment Agency on pamphlets that we are already passing out to restaurants about what they can do to donate more surplus food and the legal protections, the Good Samaritan Acts that are in existence that would protect them should anybody get sick from the donated food, but in fact, that is very rare. We are also working in the long-term to get stickers that restaurants can put at their window, just as they put right now their grading from the county, so that patrons will know what restaurants are participating in donating their surplus food. So we're moving forward with the city today. We'll get a report back in November to know how this is working, what can we do to improve it. But given the situation that we find ourselves in right now, we must do more to make sure that we feed our families who are going hungry. For me, I felt this personally during the Thanksgiving season when we had our annual turkey giveaway, and there were many families in line that told me, "You know, we never thought we would be in line for a free turkey, but here we are." We sensed it even more this year. We got to do more to feed those people who need the food. It's not a supply issue. It's a distribution issue. The food is there. We just have to get it to those people who need it. And in fact, we are not only doing a service to our fellow human being, but we're doing a service to our planet because our landfills are tremendously impacted by all the food we throw away. So thank you. And I want to thank all the advocates who have been working and brought this idea to us about a year ago. We have much more work to do. And finally, I want to thank Mr. Coretts for being a partner and bringing this forward today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to our colleague, Councilmember Weisar, for all the work that he's done on this issue. So often, we enact policies that just exist theoretically, but this one is actually going to help feed people in the City of Los Angeles and set an example for other cities in this country and even beyond. We will have an ability to stop wasting the food that we've been wasting since time began and actually be able to make sure that it goes to the places that it needs to, our food banks, which are so desperately in need in a way that we've never seen in our lifetimes. So I'm very excited to have participated in this. I'm also involved in the Jewish Federation's Fed Up With Hunger campaign, which this is a piece of. I think we can be very proud of this action, and we're going to help feed thousands of people and save tons of waste from going into our landfills. One of the best things I think the city's done in a long time. So again, thank you, Mr. Weisar, for all your good work on this, and I ask for an aye vote.
There we go for the aye votes. Colleagues, open the roll. Labonge has withdrawn. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That passes. Next item, please.
Mr. President, would you wish to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
Let's recess.
Very good. That takes council back to items called special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
We haven't taken public comment yet?
No, sir, we have not.
Mr. Parks, we haven't taken public comment, and you want number thirty-four brought up now? There's a lot of cards on number thirty-four. On number thirty-four. Or regular public comment. Your preference? Public comment on thirty-four or regular public comment? We have a lot of cards on thirty-four. Okay.
We've had hearings, but we'd like to have
All right. We have a number of cards on number thirty-four. And how much time, Mr. Parks?
If we could get twenty minutes for either side.
Twenty and twenty, forty minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll start the clock. You get a minute to speak on this matter. Have you called forward, Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, just thank you, Mr. President. Now we're back in the regular meeting to follow the direction of the City Attorney and the City Clerk. Twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Fourth whiff, please.
Mr. Clerk, you have that for Mr. Labonge?
Twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Fourth whiff.
Thank you. That'll be the direction. And we will begin with the public comment on this. We have pro and con, and we'll do with the against first. Winifred Jackson. Winifred Jackson, followed by Linda Ricks.
And, Mr. President, just a reminder, this is a fair hearing matter requiring the council members' heightened attention to the speaker at the podium or to their displays on their screens.
Very well. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Winifred Jackson. I'm representing the Hope, uh, community organization, Matt Nellou Block Club and James Stinson. On behalf of their parents, we join in all comments of concern and opposition to the Fresh and Easy project as it is currently proposed. And I formally request that the documents be entered into the records. To be clear, we are not opposed to a grocery store in our community. We simply want them to comply with our Crenshaw specific plan. It would be ridiculous to say that Hope is about bringing, against bringing a store into our community. We were doing, fighting for stores long before it became popular. It is really sad to see our community divided by this product of Fresh and Easy, refusing to sit down with us. We guess we will, um, all I can say is they do not want to negotiate this matter any further. So if we don't stand for something, we'll fall for anything. So I guess we'll just see them in court.
Linda Ricks. And following Linda Ricks will be Juliette Boyd-Benton. Is Juliette here? Okay, great. Linda Ricks. Good morning. My name is Linda Ricks. I am a member of Hope and also a stakeholder at Park Mesa Heights Community Council. Honorable council members, I want to raise the issue of parking exception of the design granted to the Fresh and Easy development. In many ways, this exception strikes at the heart of this community's efforts to develop a pedestrian-friendly district between Fifty Second and Slauson. The community specifically designed this area as a pedestrian-oriented area in the Pacific Plan. To allow Fresh and Easy to place a football-sized parking lot along Crenshaw Boulevard would be tantamount to allowing a strip mall. We oppose the design. We think Fresh and Easy could have done better. They have done better in other communities. We are asking that this project conform to the intent of our specific plan. As such, we ask that you deny the exceptions and uphold the appeal. Ms. Juliette Boyd-Benton.
Good morning. Thank you. I want the council to be aware that they have been misled into believing that this neighborhood is where Fifty Second and Crenshaw is, and by the way, I live a block away from there. You've been misled into believing that this is a food desert. That is flatly, blatantly false. Okay? Just because we're a black community doesn't mean that we live in a food desert. We have grocery stores on Crenshaw boulevards, three of them, one of them two blocks away from this Fresh and Easy location. And also, I want you to be aware, since there seems to be the notion that there is a necessity for Fresh and Easy to be there and therefore an urgency to allow these exemptions, that this is an, this is a multi-billion-dollar operation that does not even accept WIC. So it offers little benefit to those of my low-income neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, so that we can keep the hearing moving, I'm going to call up several people at a time. Walter Cathy, Kristen Launer, Andre Dixon, and Claudette
Good morning, Council Chair and Councilmembers. Thank you for listening to us today regarding our Fresh and Easy at Fifty Second and Crenshaw. My name is Walter Cathy, Jr. I'm the Regional Real Estate Director for Fresh and Easy Neighborhood Markets. Fresh and Easy is about a fourteen-thousand-square-foot store, which is about the size of a Trader Joe's or Walgreens.
Let me just, he's going to come up to the table. If we can just ask him to hold his comments, and he'll be a part of the table presentation as representing
Mr. Cathy?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Then we'll go to Kristen Launer.
Actually, I think
Kristen?
I actually am following. I think I should. Do you want me?
And do you want the LAPD officer to go to the table, too, Mr. Parks?
We could just have the LAPD officer at the podium and not hold his time.
Okay. That would be Officer Andre Dixon.
Yes, ma'am. How you doing today, ma'am? I'm just here to support the current design, and if there's any, far as a security aspect, I agree with the current design far as what they have in place here far as a security aspect. I'm the senior lead in that area, and I truly like this design at Five Two in Crenshaw. Any, if you have any questions or anything about that.
May I just ask one question?
Could you give the council and those who are present what your comments would be if the parking lot was behind the building?
If the parking lot was behind the building, far as, as a police officer, when we're driving by or we're just coming through, we won't be able to see the parking lot from Crenshaw or Five Two. This design gives us ability to see it from Crenshaw, from Five Two, to drive through. Whether an officer is going somewhere else, he can drive through the parking lot, look inside the building, check the parking lot to make sure there's nothing going on, and keep going. keep going southbound down Crenshaw. So, the design is user-friendly for, as far as a police aspect.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Alarcon, did you want to ask the officer a question? Your button got pressed. Okay, great. Claudette?
Yes. My name is Claudette Thomas. I'm secretary of the Park Mesa Heights Community Council. And we had a dealership that left the neighborhood some years ago, a Chevrolet dealership, and that land sat for twenty years before anything was built on it. And when the building did start, there were several variances that were granted these two buildings. And I'd hate to see another lot sit for twenty years. I've asked the Hope organization on numerous occasions, "Do you have anything to put on this lot in the place of Fresh and Easy?" The answer was always, "That's not the issue. We're talking specific plan." And I beg to differ. I think that is the issue.
All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. The next folks will be Jim Macbeth. Is Jim Macbeth here? Come on up, Jim Macbeth. Marie Elise DiMarco. Deanne Morris. Is Deanne Morris here? Come on up. And Stuart Huggins. And Samuel Garrison. Mr. Macbeth.
Yes. My name is Jim Macbeth. I've been in the community as a business owner and a property owner for the last forty years. I've seen the area decline within that forty years from when I first moved there. A lot of major businesses was there. Now, we haven't had a major business to come in the community for the last probably twenty years. So, Fresh and Easy, I am a developer contractor myself. The design of the Fresh and Easy is a friendly design, and I'm in favor of the design. So, I would like to see the Fresh and Easy come in. Also, I'm involved in health food. I'm a very advocate of health food. I hardly ever eat anything in the community because I can't find anything that I eat. I'm a vegetarian, so I hardly ever eat in the community. I'm always going out. So, I would like to see a healthy place. I shop at Fresh and Easy in the area that I live in, which is Mount Washington, and I shop there very often. So, I would like to see something come in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marie Elise DiMarco.
Hi. After living in Los Feliz for eighteen years, I brought up and fed two boys on healthy food available within walking distance of three supermarkets and a health food store. What a shock it was for my family when we bought our home in Windsor Hills in two thousand nine. We went on our first outing to the supermarket. We couldn't find no organic milk, organic milk products in the dairy case. We found an aisle full of soda and other soft drinks. My family doesn't drink soda or soft drinks. There were no pure juices except for orange juice. And there were two aisles full of liquor, but we couldn't find a gallon of organic milk or milk-free of RBST. We left without buying anything. How could our beautiful neighborhood not have a quality supermarket? Now, at least we sound like snobs. Let me assure you, we are not, nor are we following some new trend. The lack of availabilities of these foods in our neighborhood forces us to travel to Westchester, Marina Del Rey, Culver City, and Santa Monica to do our grocery shopping. Therefore, our purchasing tax, I don't know what it's called, I guess, the tax that you pay on anything that isn't food, it goes to those areas, not to where I live. In order to get to these destinations, I have to drive. Thank God I have a car to do so.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Deanne Morris. Stuart Huggins. Samuel Garrison. Armin Ross, if you would come forward. And Carolyn Hall, unless you want Carolyn to go to the table? All right. Then Carolyn will go to the table. Ingrid P.W. White. Deanne Morris.
Good morning. I'm Deanne Morris, and I'm a twenty, over twenty-year resident of Limer Park and also a employee of Los Angeles Urban League as a deputy health officer. I support Fresh and Easy. I spend a lot of time in the community with residents, trying to get them to be advocates for themselves around making healthy choices. But the first thing they ask me is that, "Where do I go get those healthy choices?" We do have a couple markets, but the markets does not provide what we need. So, I support the project, and we have a lot of residents that are really concerned about what they eat, and we're tired of going out of the community to go to stores like a Fresh and Easy or anything else. Also, we're really concerned that if Fresh and Easy comes in, that would allow other markets and other venues to come into the community to help revitalize Crenshaw. Thank you.
Stuart Huggins.
Good morning, council. My name is Stuart Huggins, and I'm a stakeholder at Park Mesa Heights Community Council. I also represent the Bryn Hurs Block Club. We live two blocks from the proposed site. While we support the markets, we have issue with the exceptions that they're asking. Please, we urge you to approve the appeal. Fresh and Easy is not the panacea that we would like for them to be. If you go into one of their markets, the square footage that's devoted to fresh fruits and vegetables is much less per square foot than our local Ralph's market. We support Fresh and Easy, but we do not support the exceptions. Please, I urge you, do not grant the appeal.
Samuel Garrison.
Good morning. I'm Sam Garrison with the L.A. Chamber of Commerce. At this time in our economy with so much unemployment, to have a job creator willing to invest in neighborhoods throughout our city, not only to create jobs, but to provide additional options for the residents in that community, we believe Fresh and Easy is doing an outstanding service, and we hope that you'll support their efforts and that we can get this store open, provide the additional options, and create good-paying jobs at the time we need them most. Thank you.
White, if you...
Yes. I am a real estate broker and a retail consultant, and I've been in the industry for about twenty-five years. Over twenty years ago, I moved to Los Angeles because I saw a market in South L.A. that was an incredible market that wasn't being served. I had no idea the trouble and the challenges that I was going to face in trying to bring tenants into South L.A. There are two things that happened that make these tenants come in. One is their own understanding of the area, their will to come in, and then the political will. What's happened here with Fresh and Easy is we finally have both. With Bernard Parks as councilman of the area, he has shown great leadership in terms of addressing this, and we have a tenant who wants to come into the area. I want to read something very quickly out of, from the governor's office, and it says, although a specific plan must be prepared, adopted, amended in the same way, manner as a general plan, it may be adopted by resolution or ordinance and may be amended as often as necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. White. We have to be fair to everyone and make sure that they all have the same...
Just one more?
Otherwise, it causes us to have to give everyone an extension of time. If you'd like to enter a copy of that into the official record, we can take care of that. The officer here can walk over and take a copy of that for you.
Do you think now?
Yeah. You can give it to him right now. Mr. Ross.
Madam President, my name is Armin Ross, and I've been a member of the Crenshaw community since nineteen seventy-two, and I'm a member of the Crenshaw Chamber of Commerce, the business representatives for the area. Since the insurrection of nineteen ninety-two, we have had very few new markets come into our area. We had to beg and plead with the Albertsons to come in. They came in. It turned out to be one of the greatest, one of the most prosperous stores in their chain. Same thing with Lucky Markets on Crenshaw. We need quality foods. We need quality businesses to come in. We've only had two quality restaurants come in in the past twenty years, Marie Callender's, who's long gone, and Denny's Restaurant. You just passed a fast food ICO today to create the need for healthy foods. This project will provide those healthy foods for you, and I urge you to support the Fresh and Easy project here.
Thank you very much. Carolyn, is Carolyn Hall?
Yes.
And then after Carolyn, Michael Jones. Mr. Jones, are you still here? Come on up. Maya Zutler. Maya, are you here? All right. Come on up. David Galavies. And Lavanna B. Lewis. Ms. Hall.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Carolyn Hall. I'm the South Los Angeles Regional Administrator for the Community Redevelopment Agency for the City of Los Angeles. In that role, what we try to do is bring quality retailers and other businesses into South L.A. It has been an extreme challenge to do so, mainly because of the perception, South L.A. certainly has the purchasing power to support retailers like Fresh and Easy, and yet we have had struggles to do so. The Community Redevelopment Agency, along with the council offices, have been working with community stakeholders to tour the area, and Fresh and Easy has stepped up to the plate, looked at this community, and said, "We will invest." We are in complete support of Fresh and Easy's proposal to put a store at the site of Fifty Second Street, and we urge the council to do so as well. Thank you.
Michael Jones.
Good morning to the city council and council chair. My name is Michael Jones. I'm president and CEO of the Crenshaw Chamber of Commerce. We've been around for seventy-seven years. Fresh and Easy is a win-win for our community. We'd like to highlight the fact that jobs will be offered in our community to build it. Jobs will be offered to workers who will work there with benefits. It's a win-win because of landscaping. They talk about a large parking lot. Our chamber is going green, and we have already instituted two greening events in our community where we use parking lots to have people come in and shred their goods. So, this is a win-win. We'd like to see that you approve it and help us to reclaim our community and get things going again. Thank you very much.
Maya Zutler.
Good morning, Maya Zutler. On behalf of VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, we have been longtime supporters in Fresh and Easy, and we are here to stand in support of Fresh and Easy today. We request that you support this project before you today. We believe that it will bring good-paying jobs to Los Angeles, and especially in this economic climate. As was just mentioned, we feel this would be a win-win for Los Angeles. In addition, we feel it would bring healthy food options to an area known as a food desert. We believe that Fresh and Easy have been good corporate citizens throughout Los Angeles and have invested heavily in communities throughout our city. In this economic climate, we feel very strongly, and we hope that you will support this project before you today. Thank you.
David Galavies.
Good morning. David Galavies with USC Government Community Relations. We provided a formal letter and background. The university has a formal partnership with fifteen schools benefiting over seventeen thousand children, primarily in South Los Angeles. What many may not know is the university also is one of the largest providers of low-income childcare in South Los Angeles. We're also part of the, with the Urban League as part of the Greater Crenshaw Educational Partnership. The biggest issue we hear from our principals and the biggest issue we hear from our stakeholders is the lack of healthy food choices in the community. We also were asked by the Congressional Hispanic, Black, and Asian-Pacific American Caucus to host a tri-caucus retreat in September to talk about obesity on a national level based on the number of research that our faculty has been doing. One of the keys about our faculty research is they're able to look at obesity and food deserts from a number of perspectives, not only medicine, education, communication, but also land use. One last statistic I want to leave you with was our researchers uncovered that thirty-five percent of fifth, seventh, and ninth graders in South L.A. are overweight versus twenty-six point five percent across the state. We're supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Lavanna B. Lewis.
Good morning. I've been a resident of South L.A., the immediate area, for about ten years. And in that ten years, I've sat in a room with lots of people who've talked about how hard it is to get things done in South L.A. And I would hate to see that this Fresh and Easy project become the poster child for the naysayers and the critics who don't believe that we're ready for change in South L.A. These are, the community believes in it. We believe that we can begin to make changes. We can make healthy choices, but those choices have to be available to us. These are the kind of documents I like to have entered into the record, letters of support, but also just some language from our own specific plans, our own redevelopment agency strategic plan, and the South L.A. initiatives that make it very clear that Fresh and Easy is in line with those expectations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Clint Rosamund. Ann Williams. Is Clint Rosamund here? Clint, are you here? Okay, come on up. And then after Clint will be Ann Williams, then Marie Elise DiMarco, and then Ethel M. Austin Spearman. Mr. Rosamund is right behind you, I think. And then you're next, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Clint Rosamund. I'm the manager of the Business Improvement District for the Crenshaw Corridor in Limer Park Village. I work for Community Build, and I'm here representing those two agencies. We basically support the proposal. We think it provides an opportunity to have expanded alternative shopping opportunities. It will provide jobs. It will certainly fill a hole that currently exists in the landscape there, and we think that it will be an overall asset to the community. We've spent a lot of time working with Carolyn Hall and CD eight representatives on many matters relating to the development of South Central and Central Los Angeles, and we think this will clearly be an asset. We do urge approval.
Ann Williams.
Good morning, council members. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association, representing four hundred and fifty businesses employing over three hundred and fifty thousand people in Los Angeles County. CCA works to promote the type of investment that will not only build a better economy, but also a better community and a better quality of life for all Angelinos. And as you know, many of our areas of our city, including Council District Eight, are faced with a lack of healthy food options. So, we believe that bringing businesses such as Fresh and Easy to these food deserts is critical to the redevelopment of our neighborhoods. And as you've heard, in fact, this is the first new full-service retail grocer attempting to locate in CD eight since the nineties. This project is exactly the type of investment we should be encouraging, and we ask that you support the South L.A. Area Planning Commission's determination. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Elise DiMarco.
I was up earlier, so I'd really like to just very quickly say, for the naysayers, they should go to Pacific Palisades, check out their Fresh and Easy, their Fresh, sorry, their Fresh Fair Ralph's compared to our Ralph's at Crenshaw in Slauson, and look at the Pacific Palisades gigantic football-sized parking lot and the fact that there's so much foot traffic. That's all I have to say.
Ethel Austin.
Hello, council. Madam President, I'm here in support of Fresh and Easy only. I'm asking that you all, I'm from South Central, District Eight, asking that you all think about, Fresh and Easy has invested three hundred thousand dollars in South Central, and we need, most of us are going green, most of us are vegetarian. We need fresh food around the area also. We have, if the way it's situated, it's the parking, everyone can walk. We have the post office there. We have the grocery stores there. Everything is surrounded. So, we all come in from South Central to ask you to please approve this Fresh and Easy market because we do live there, and we need this. We need this type of food in the area. Our kids are too big. They need to walk. It's a lot of walking that can be done, all in that area. I like the parking lot. It's designed perfectly.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our last, in the interest of fairness, as we said out in the beginning, we are going to, this will be our last speaker, and then I'm going to recognize the names of the individuals who are here for the record. Walter Cathy, if you would please come forward to speak at the podium.
Walter Cathy, Jr., Regional Director for Fresh and Easy Neighborhood Market. At Fresh and Easy, we fundamentally believe everyone deserves fresh wholesome food at affordable prices. We are committed to opening stores in Los Angeles. We have stores in Hollywood. We have stores in Van Nuys and Northridge. Why not South L.A.? With each store we build, we also bring good-paying jobs, comprehensive and affordable healthcare benefits. With each store, about twenty employees for each store with an average wage of ten dollars an hour. If you work twenty hours or more a week, you're allowed full-time benefits with the company paying seventy-five percent with paid time off. We strive to be a good neighbor. We worked hard on this project with the neighborhood. We worked hard on this project with the neighborhood. In the communities, we do give back by our Shop for Schools program. We also work hard and a good steward on the environment. For example, our stores have 30% less energy -- uses 30% less energy than your typical supermarket. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cathy. Mr. Parks, I am concerned about quorum. I do believe that you wanted to make some comments, and I'm going to read the names into the record after you're done.
Thank you very much. I would just like to ask Planning Department to come up and Commissioner Mills to come up, and also I'd like to ask for all of those that are here representing different groups, would you stand if you're in support of this market?
Yes!
One of the things I'd like to -- one of the things I'd like to comment on is a group of students here from View Park Prep, would you stand? They go to school within blocks of this proposed market and just recently crowned as the state championship in football just a couple of days ago. Also, we have students from Crenshaw High that are block away from the school, about 3,000 students that they represent. So thank you very much, and we hope that they will be future state champions in the next round. So I would just like to comment in the sense that certainly this is a long time coming, and I'd just like to ask Planning Department to give us a brief overview, which are the concerns about the variances, and also the comment to the public as to what has been there for the last four decades? And what was there explained, and where was the parking over the last four decades compared to what this proposal is moving?
Faisal Roble, Planning Department. As everybody indicated, this project is located within the Crenshaw Corridor Specific Plan, a sub-district that is also called a pedestrian overlay district. There is a design board that reviews all the projects that comes through this process. We took the project in its initial conception to the Design Review Board, who took a look at it, and conceptually approved the project. However, when we started to assess the recommendations from the Design Review Board, before we put it to the Director's Determination, we realized that the project had several issues that cannot be approved under the authorities of the Design Review Board. So we advised the applicant, while the concept of the project is being approved by the Design Review Board, to go ahead and seek what we call Specific Plan exemptions. You seek Specific Plan exemptions when the project cannot satisfy the tenants of the Specific Plan and the regulations. In that capacity, the applicant applied for Specific Plan exemptions, which goes to the APC, Area Planning Commission of South Los Angeles. Just a little caveat, that body, which is a diversified body, consists of two architects, one of them here today with me, PhD candidate in urban planning, another urban planner, and another citizen. So it's a very competent body when I compare to any other area planning commission throughout the city. They deliberated the issue, and the Specific Plan is exemptions which pertains to five areas within the Specific Plan, setback, parking waiver, and other issues were granted. The issue of parking is the most contentious, because the Specific Plan requires that projects along Crenshaw in this special district should have the parking on the back of the building. But because of other issues that Fresh and Easy brought to the board, they wanted the parking to be on the front. The Area Planning Commission granted that with very uphill conditions, that they have to have a depth of 15-feet landscaped area from the property line all the way to the parking. So it's a very well landscaped parking that the pedestrian person doesn't see the cars per se, but mainly interact with this vegetated area and landscaped area. So one of the Area Planning Commission members is here. If you have questions, I would be more than glad to answer.
What was there before the plan for the store?
It was a vacant lot, as far as I can remember, for many years, and we have had a lot of issues with that, people calling about what the city's intent is. As a matter of fact, we surveyed one time South LA's vacant lots, and it has the highest concentration of vacant lots in the area.
But what was the business before it became a vacant lot?
It was a car dealership.
Car dealership, and where was the parking?
The parking was right there in the front.
Is it the same parking lot that we're talking about for the grocery store?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let me just ask colleagues, just for your information. We've given you a copy of the Fresh and Easy slides so you get an idea of exactly what the store looks like, and then we asked Ms. Mills, who's on our South Planning Commission, if she could give us some overview of what was considered in the approval of these exemptions.
Thank you. Commissioner Rochelle Mills for the record. I want to applaud the vigilance of the Hope Organization and their commitment to the Specific Plan. However, the Area Planning Commission is comprised of very capable and very committed commission members who live in that community. My daughter went to View Park Prep and graduated from Crenshaw High. I live and work in that area. And we took very seriously the recommendations from the staff. We went through the slides, we made recommendations to the Fresh and Easy company. And as Faisal mentioned, what we thought was most important was that it maintained the pedestrian spirit that was in the Specific Plan, and we think we were able to accomplish that by requiring additional setbacks and landscaping. There's landscaping integrated into the parking lot itself. We think we've managed to do what the Specific Plan was asking for. We think we were able to maintain our role as good stewards of our community and to hold the Fresh and Easy accountable. Our concern was not with whether or not there are other food choices in the neighborhood, but because that was, for so many years, a car dealership and then an empty lot, and then subsequent to that empty lot was a use that was not approved, another auto use that the community did have the right to protest against. Now that we've got Fresh and Easy with a capable committee and a capable drawing and the recommendations of the staff and the Planning Commission to enhance the landscaping, to make it pedestrian-friendly, I think we have solved what the community would like, what the spirit and the intent of the Specific Plan is, and I think this will be a catalyst for other similar development.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, we have three speakers on the queue.
Can I just do one thing before they speak? I would like to ensure that we put a variety of documents that came to us from Community Health Council, letters, also USC's report in the council file, and I have a verbal amendment I'd like to make. But before I close down, I'd like just to read you what I think is the essence of this issue. A five-year-old wrote us a letter and said, "Please let us have a new Fresh and Easy market so my mommy and daddy can shop on 52nd and Crenshaw." And that's a young lady by the name of Ina Esther, age five. And so I think that's the key factor. The verbal amendment we'd like to make is that there was a technical error in that actually the Planning Commission reduced the number of signs on the store from two to one on 52nd Street, and we want to clarify that and ensure that that's supported. And then also, we would like to ask the council to deny the appeal and adopt the conditions approved by the South LA Planning Commission, so I'd ask for an aye vote on that verbal amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. And before we go to the speaker queue, I just need to read the names into the record of the people who were here for the record. For the proposal, Kristen Lanner, Lark Galloway Gilliam, Tanisha Wright, Gwendolyn Flynn, Theodore Thomas, Sr., Jacqueline Castillo, Ogo Olele, and against Damian Goodman. All right, those are all the cards we have, and they are now part of the official file. And our first speaker in the queue is Mr. Alarcon.
Council Members, unfortunately I have to rise simply to state why I am going to vote against this. And let me say that I -- first of all, I'm very well aware of the issues of the food desert. My mother, in fact, worked at the Boys Market on Crenshaw, and so we have a long history with the community. But the reason that I cannot support this is to remain consistent. The fact is that I understand they have automated tellers, and they intend to get a conditional use permit to sell alcohol. And I believe that the two do not go together. I voted against it when -- I voted against it for the Silmar location. In fact, I had to work very hard to deny that conditional use permit, which finally was approved. So the Fresh and Easy does exist in my district, but it does not have the sales of alcohol combined with the automated tellers. In addition, we did pass -- the City Council passed a resolution to support a Hector Delatorre bill that would have banned the combination of automated tellers with the sales of alcohol. This council adopted that resolution. I think we should be consistent. And so I have to vote against it. I appreciate the concerns of the needs to create more food retail establishments on the South Side, but frankly, I'm just doing this. It's a philosophical thing. Former board member of Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, and I stand with him on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Okay, excuse me, please. No outbursts, that's not acceptable in the chamber, and if it continues, I would have to ask you to leave. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you. For those who are unaware, Mr. Alarcon's son was killed by a drunk driver, so he's very sympathetic to that cause. I too served on the board, Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, and I've seen the tragedies with drunk drivers, so I just want to put that for the record. The issue of Ralphs and Costco and other stores, they have the automated tellers now. How do we control the sale of alcohol at those locations? Fresh and Easy has that, but other retail has the same thing. How do we control that throughout the city?
Council Member, for the record, the alcohol issue is not part of the decision today that's in front of you. That may come some other time in front of you.
No, but I understand, but to prove this, how do we make sure that youngsters, people that aren't eligible to purchase alcohol, how do we protect them?
I think between the Planning Department, which guarantees those conditional use permits, would probably be instructed by your body to enhance and make the conditions.
But how do we do it with Costco, and how do we do it with Ralphs? How do we do all these other markets that sell items, and they have the automated tellers in place now?
Again, I would say probably --
You don't have the answer.
No, I don't have the answer. You probably need to put something in the books.
Okay, it's bigger than this Fresh and Easy, but we need to identify and come up with whatever solution they have. I'm sure there's some solution. I have in my district, in the Willa Nils area, a Costco that wants to come in. There's some community opposition to a Costco, and I support Mr. Parks in this endeavor. It takes a long time to come up with something. I've got 31 acres of land. They want to put in a Costco, there's some community opposition. But I look at it this way: We have vacant land, we have people who need jobs, we need to increase the opportunities for employment, we need to give those opportunities for people who want to work, as well as purchasing products and food products, and Fresh and Easy has that. And I will say to Fresh and Easy, "You're welcome to come to the West San Fernando Valley and come on over in my district in the West San Fernando Valley. We have some available space," so I invite Fresh and Easy to come out and join us, and I also support Mr. Parks in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President and Madam President. First of all, I want to second Mr. Parks' amendment motion, so we have that on the record and call for the question.
Thank you very much. Let's open the roll. Mr. Smith has called for the question. Please open the roll on the call for the question. Close the roll. Close the roll. 12 ayes. All right, so the question has been asked and answered, so we will now open the roll on this item. Please open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you for the celebration for Fresh and Easy coming into Mr. Parks' district. Thank you. For those of you in chambers, we need to continue our council meeting, so we would please ask that you quietly depart as we continue our council meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Sure, that would take us back to the remaining two items called special or general public comment.
Let's do public comment. Arnold Sachs, public comment time. Arnold Sachs. Is Arnold Sachs in the chambers? I don't see Arnold Sachs in the chambers. Walter Bechtel, Walter Bechtel in the chambers? I don't see Walter Bechtel in the chambers. Let's go to the Valley. Bruce Darian, Bruce Darian.
Council President Zine, it's a catastrophe here. Nobody comes here. You make people wait an hour and a half. I probably won't come here anymore. It's a waste of time. The issue that I'm talking about is with the judge denying the Bell, the City of Bell, I didn't even read it, but I just saw the headline on it, a receiver. We've had a corrupt receivership with Los Angeles contracts on what the state deemed as an organized crime project. That's Malibu Pier. Organized crime in Los Angeles is prevalent. Okay? Many businesses have been infiltrated by this, and you as a council do nothing. The city attorney's office does nothing, the county council does nothing, the state attorney general does nothing. It's fraudulent government with fraudulent businesses, and that's where we're at. As far as Malibu and the city of Los Angeles, which you -- basically you're aiding and abetting this fraudulent activity with your city council, and we'll do some battle here. Okay? Los Angeles is now connected with Malibu to take the sewage. That's been the battle of Malibu, is to save Malibu over the sewage, and Los Angeles is all set up to take it. Why? Because Malibu's going to be -- it's going to be what's known as Potter'sville. It's going to be a go-go town, built out and ready to go, and Los Angeles is right there to take its sewage. That's been the problem with Malibu for decades now to save it from this type of catastrophe. Los Angeles is a fraud, the county is a fraud, and the state is a fraud, and the federal government does nothing. You have crooked businesses that you sanction and ratify. You do not prosecute these people. You're more interested in going after laptops that are stolen. I'm a member of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association. Constant briefings on closing your -- putting stuff in your trunk and stuff. What about the gangs, cartels, drug trafficking, the crime in Los Angeles?
If our viewing audience has information about illegal activity, we encourage you to report it to your local law enforcement agency. Mr. Smith?
Yes, ask number 34 to go forthwith, please.
34 forthwith for Mr. Smith. Henry Marine. Front and center, Marine.
Can we get a --
We got a quorum.
Is that a quorum?
We got a quorum.
It's a quorum?
Well, 10's a quorum.
10's a quorum. Where are you at?
They're here.
All right. Yesterday, I reminded our horseshoe stewards that no one advised them of the CAO or the CEO that it was illegal to reduce the prevailing sum owed to others and me until October 26, However, elected officials working in trust of past city attorneys and CEOs authorized them to reduce the prevailing sum owed to others and me in good faith since 1989. It is now clear as a bell, with city attorneys and labor and benefit divisions head to cause controller, council, and taxpayer accounting disputes and featherbed courtrooms to the detriment of taxpayers. Union contractor and employee representatives are bonded to cover losses due to incompetence or corruption. Union banks may be willing to facilitate a tran, tax revenue anticipation note for our 110% wiser budget committee police. I'm sure my CD8 representative and others will be making motions to resolve these misunderstandings of professional employees in regard to third-party transactions on behalf of taxpayers and 15 CDs. However, the council does have the option to agree to continue to illegally pay others on and after October 26, 10, at will. This is up to you. Can you copy this? Can copy this?
Thank you. Sergeant Arms will take that paper. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. That completes our public speakers for today. We are, uh, absent two members, so we're going to be looking for the two members. We're gonna put on hold right now. We're going to, uh, hold the meeting. We are short two members at this moment. Thank you. It doesn't really qualify for today. Mr. Hernandez, we use you as a fill-in. We need to locate Mr. Wesner. Mr. Parks. All right, well, Mr. Parks is off the queue at this moment. He's probably celebrating, appropriately so. All right. So we're back in session. Thank you. Mr. Sacks, you were called, you didn't answer, you didn't come forward under public comments, sir. All right, Mr. Sacks, come in, I give you two minutes, public comment.
Thank you, sir. You know, you have the crowd like that, but that's another story. Congratulations to the city council for all their heavy lifting, lifting they've just accomplished by getting these ordinances put on the ballot for next March, but it really accomplished nothing. Vanilla ordinances that don't really address the problem. Here's some of the real information you should be aware of. A, the libraries are gonna have to pay for their utility usage, about $20 million. Parks and Recreation are gonna have to pay for the electricity, about another $20 million. The utilities did not receive the E-CAP raise they wanted, but now city agencies that were able to have the utilities paid for out of the public, public funds, now need to come up with the money. The library and Parks and Recreation. So that's like an additional raise to the E-CAP. The city, according to the most costly part of the revenue drain, which is the pensions and healthcare, didn't really address that. They need to address it by changing state law. So here's a plan of action for you, if you'd like to listen or pay atten, care to listen. If your elected official running for office or whoever's running for office does not say or does not produce any kind of legislation that will affect state legislation to change pension rules and plans, vote no. Don't vote for them. That's the message.
May I give Mr. Sacks, uh, next item, please, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 38, called special for cards.
Number what?
Thirty-eight.
Number 38 for cards. Arnold Sacks is the only card we have on number 38.
This item 38, my question for holding this item, again, is this property, city, city property in Kern County, is tax paid on that? Does the city pay Kern County tax on that, property tax on that? Because this is, uh, public works, for a public works property. So I bring up a point about Department of Water and Power, where they pay taxes in other counties for property, but they don't pay property tax in the city of L.A. or the county, I'm, I'm not sure, the county. So the question is, is why the difference? I know Department of Water and Power is a proprietary department, and the Board of Public, uh, the Department of Public Works is actually a city agency, which is a major difference. But you're talking about funds that would benefit the public resources. Why should D W P continue to get a waiver? It needs to be addressed. That's the item that should have been put on the ballot, whether D W P should be able to keep paying, making quarterly payments, or should they pay taxes on their property? This is being paid tax-wise. Why shouldn't D W P pay for the city of L.A.? Thank you.
All right, that matter is now before us. Colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 39, called special for cards.
Fourth with on 38. Number 39, Mr. Sacks, number 39, our last item for the day.
Well, 39, thank you, Arnold Sacks. 39, the city, the C L A and the C A O will monitor the progress of the regional connector and evaluate proposed development opportunities, project for potential development. Well, how do you like that? The city, the downtown regional connector is gonna be looked at by the C L A, the C A O, and report maybe back to the wonderful city council. A project 20 years, no, excuse me, 30 years late in being built. Part of the original blue line, the part that would have gone from Long Beach to Union Station, but redundantly, the red line built in its place so that the extension of the red line from Seventh and Figaroa would not occur any further than to Western Avenue. So money has been changing hands three times for one project, a $1.4 billion project that doesn't include a needed station at Fifth and Flower, should have been built in 1990, and almost, pretty sure that almost half or more than half of this city council was not necessarily involved in the major planning, but had an inkling of what was to occur during the corruption of the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority. Because that's what this is. This speaks of pure corruption. A $1.4 billion project that could have been built, operating, and continued for $200,000.
That concludes the comment on this. There are no speakers on the queue. Uh, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That concludes that item. Are there any further items, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, sir, council has motions for posting and referral.
They should be posted and referred.
And the desk is clear.
Desk is clear. Uh, will you have any announcements? Mr. Zine?
Announcements? If I can have my staff please join me, as we bid farewell to a very dedicated man, Christopher Olson. Chris Olson's moving to San Francisco. He's been the policy director in my office, and we have a wonderful resolution for him signed by all the council members, the mayor, our city attorney, controller, et cetera. Uh, Chris had worked for Wendy Gruhl, worked for me, policy director. He's quick. He can come up with an idea, get the motion generated in record-breaking time. His office is immaculate, absolutely immaculate, the most, the most organized person, and he, he's done, he's done a tremendous job, but we're gonna miss him, but he's moving to San Francisco. He has no job. He may be a tour guide at Alcatraz if nothing else comes up. I reminded him of that. You don't have the great weather, you don't have the wonderful people, but he's just a great, great individual who's worked for Wendy Gruhl and for Council District Three. So on behalf of me and the staff and the Fine City family, Chris, we wish you well in your future endeavors. You've been great, you've been fantastic, and we acknowledge your great service to the people of Los Angeles serving in two council offices. So God bless you. Couple words from you.
Thanks, everybody. I'm gonna miss City Hall, and, um, just thanks for all the things that I've learned from everybody, from, uh, starting out with Wendy and the field and moving to City Hall, and then working for Mr. Zine here, who's, uh, really helped me grow professionally, and I appreciate everything very much. Thanks.
Wish you well, Chris. God bless you and your San Francisco.
And good luck, Chris. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I just wanted to, uh, share with you that upon return of the National League of Cities, uh, we do have a member of our council, Councilman Bernard Parks, who'll be the new member of the board. Uh, it was great to see some of my colleagues there. That was my last year on the board. Uh, it was a great experience. What became very evident, though, is that, uh, the environment, the political environment nationally is a very tenuous one. Uh, the issues that are affecting our cities are such that our ability to maintain local control is being severely challenged by the way our funding patterns and policies are evolving. If we're going to maintain levels of support for our communities through block grant and through other programs, uh, it's imperative that we begin to organize and become more effective at these national organizations. So I would hope in the next two years, uh, my colleagues can be more, can I say this, uh, involved in the various committees that affect these national discussions. Uh, the issue of immigration is gonna be a very sensitive one, uh, I think volatile. The next conference will be in Phoenix, Arizona, and the focus there will be on how we are able to grow as a country by embracing our diversity, looking at our economy, and looking at how we set strategies in leveraging our capacity as a great nation within the international economic system. So these are very critical issues that are facing us nationally. Los Angeles, the second greatest, biggest city in the country, has a pivotal role, and I would hope that we can see, uh, another layer of council members coming in and taking an effective role in this national organization. And, uh, Bernard Parks will be the new member of the board. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and, uh, congratulations to Councilmember Parks. Any other announcements? Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Reyes, for your involvement in a lot of, of the organizations, even on the national level, but also I want to remind us as, as colleagues and as, uh, representatives of the city of Los Angeles, being the second largest city in the country, um, when we do get involved in organizations, we often find ourselves talking about things that other municipalities and other communities haven't traversed yet, and they do learn from us. Uh, we get used to the dialogue here, and we, when you realize it, you realize how sophisticated the city of Los Angeles is, and that's a testament to the history of this great city and also the great work that the staff do and also the elected officials that represent this city. So it's really important that, when we can, that we represent our city and the perspectives that we bring, and also try to help other communities to learn from our mistakes and also from our successes. And, uh, so I personally make sure that I'm involved in the California League of Cities on that board, and also on the Latino Caucus League of Cities as well, as the president, and also as a board member of the, of the League of Cities of California and various other organizations that, that actually meet in Washington and other parts of the country. Uh, some people might see that as something that's frugal or wasteful or what have you, uh, but, uh, the fact of the matter is, it is really important, and when you really think about the involvement that we do have, it does help the city tremendously, because we also learn from the organizations and the dialogue going on there as well. So thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Reyes.
The colleagues, we sometimes, uh, find ourselves in these, what some might call hit pieces, because we've gone to a certain city, that we stay at a certain hotel, and it essentially takes away that drive initiative to be part of these organizations, but the general public, I would hope, would understand that there's some real benefits we bring back to the city. For example, uh, we have the prescription card, a 20% discount on non, uh, on items that are not covered by your medical insurance. This helps out our seniors, our youngsters, our families who need to pay more for their medical, uh, needs, and that's citywide. So I'll be speaking to my colleagues, see if they'd like to, uh, display, uh, essentially provide these cards to your constituents, but it's a very specific way we can help each other out, and more importantly, be involved in the national discussion. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Reyes. Any other announcements? Uh, this turning into debate?
I think, no, I think it's appropriate that I point out that our Republican colleague on the council actually chaired the environmental committee for the California League of Cities, and his chairmanship just ended, and I just wanted to thank him and use him as an example of the leadership that he's exuded, and when he chaired his last meetings, he got an applause and a lot of thanks from a lot of people, way on the left, way on the right, or what have you, because he did a very, very fair and good job. So once again, it's an opportunity for us to show our better side and to be a leader, not only for our city, but for constituents around the state or the nation. So I just want to thank, uh, Councilmember Greg Smith for the fine job that he did, as I was assigned to that committee as well, but he was the chairman and did a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Appreciate that, Mr. Reyes. Any other announcements? Any other debates? Okay, so we have adjourning motions, we have one. Would you all please rise, everyone in the chambers, please rise for adjourning motions?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. The, uh, the formal adjourning motion for our good friend who passed away Joe Sorrell, passed away December 3rd, Joseph Sorrella, born in the Queens, June 19th, 1935, son of a New York City fireman, Sal Marion, his mom, a campaign worker who later worked for somebody, Speaker Jesse Unruh in Sacramento. His parents dropped the A off of Sorrella so their son could escape anti-Italian discrimination during World War II. As a prominent public affairs, public relations, and political consultant, Joe Sorrell worked professionally in politics for almost five decades. In 1966, Joe founded and served as chairman and CEO of Sorrell Associates Incorporated, based in Los Angeles. During his career, Joe played key roles in the presidential campaigns of John Fitzgerald Kennedy, Lyndon B. Johnson, Herbert H. Humphrey, Lloyd Benson, John Glenn, and Al Gore. Joe managed a wide variety of local and state campaigns and pioneered the field of judicial campaign management on his own and as part of the firm. He was chairman emeritus, past president of the American Association of Political Consultants, and past president of the International Association of Political Consultants. Also served, member of the White House Business and Public Affairs Advisory Committee by appointment, President Jimmy Carter. Despite his New York upbringing, Joe loved Los Angeles, which is where he married his wife, Lee. Together, they raised a family of three children, two boys, Steve and Joe Junior, and one daughter, Sharon. Joe ran his successful business and built an unparalleled reputation for giving back to the community. He was a resident of Hancock Park for more than 50 years, was proud to relocate his firm to nearby Larchmont Boulevard in 1980. Joe served on the Board of Directors of Los Angeles World Affairs Council, was past chairman of the Hollywood Wilshire YMCA, past vice president of the Public Relations Society of America, Los Angeles chapter, and a member of the Board of Visitors of the Rosario School of Business Management, Pepperdine University, also served as president of the California Museum of Science Industry, and as a member of Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum Commission when it hosted the 1984 Olympic Games. Joe was a graduate of University of Southern California, which is where he completed 15 years as an adjunct professor in the USC's prestigious Jesse Unruh Institute of Politics, which he co-founded. Past member of the Board of Governors, USC Alumni Association, distinguished visiting professor in political science at Pepperdine University in Malibu, also lectured and conducted seminars and political forums across the nation. Those closest to Joe knew that despite his deep love for American politics, Italian food, Yankees, and USC, his greatest joy was spending time with his family. Joyed... food, Yankees, and USC, his greatest joy was spending time with his family. Joe died Friday, December 3rd, at home of complications from pneumonia. He was 75. Survived by his wife, Lee, three children, Steve Bullock, daughter Sharon, Sorrell Levy, Joe Sorrell Jr., along with his seven beloved grandchildren, Kimberly and Christopher, Danny, Lauren, Sal, Chase, and Josie. May he rest in peace, Joe Sorrell.
Anyone else? Okay, any other adjourned motions? Mr. Weiser.
Thank you. And Mr. President, Councilwoman Janice Hahn and I introduced a motion to name the Italian Hall at La Cita del Verano after Joe Sorrell. As many of you know, whenever we discussed getting Italian Hall renovated back in place
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. Perez is certainly right. All of us feel very much that we were personal friends with Joe Sorrell. In fact, when many of us were at his funeral, it was remarkable to me that this church was absolutely packed to the rafters with people, and it was absolutely clear that every single person in that church felt that they were personal friends who were personally connected with Joe Sorrell. And I think that really speaks to the kind of man that he was. I was one of his very first students at USC. I was in his first class that he taught at USC in the Unruh Institute when I was 19 years old. And I think it's fair to say that if it weren't for Joe Sorrell, my path in life might have been very different, and I might have gone on to do other things, and I might not be sitting here with all of you today. And what I think was most remarkable to me about Joe was not just hearing his stories about how he's influenced the government of this country, not just hearing how he's shaped the careers of the great and the famous and, you know, presidents and senators and others, although those were terrific things and important parts of the relationship that I had with him as a, as a very young man. What was most remarkable to me and most noteworthy was that even though he had done all those things, he always had time for a 19-year-old college student who just wanted a little bit of advice and guidance. And I think that was what was remarkable about Joe Sorrell's. No matter what he achieved in life, he treated everyone at every stage of life as though they were important. He was relentlessly positive. I don't think I ever heard him say a negative word about anyone or anything. And our country and our state and our city will, will miss him a great deal. But it's also true that I think our government, our community, will always benefit from the great legacy that he left behind and the influence that he had in this world when he was here.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
President, I really believe it's valuable to share Joe Sorrell's story because it speaks to how we need to celebrate his life. As a candidate, the first time I ran, I was in a very fairly dark place in terms of should I run, should I not? Most folks were saying, maybe you shouldn't, this is crazy, and I wouldn't speak to him. And we spent about a good hour talking, and when I walked away, he essentially, his advice was, go with your heart. If you have the energy, despite what anyone says, you want to feel complete and you don't have to regret that you didn't try. And he was very supportive. He didn't detract me from that sense of purpose and goal. Fast forward a few years, my son is, my son Adam, I guess he was eight years old, went to National League of Cities. We had that really great dinner, and Nancy Pelosi was sitting at the table, and my son was really shy and had his little suit on, and he looked pretty sharp. And he took him to meet Nancy, and Nancy shook his hand, and she sat him on her lap, and they were talking, and it was just amazing, and Joe made that happen. He was like, that's a memory my son will always have. And now we talk about the national politics, that name, that face means something, and it really created an environment that was very family-oriented, and for me, I always treasure that sense of warmth that he offered us as folks who go through this public service.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
This is an extraordinary moment. Again, we've talked about Joe yesterday, many of us did, and we're talking about him again today, and we'll continue to talk about Joe Sorrell for the rest of our lives. Joe and I were friends for over 30 years. He watched my back for 22 years in the cable business. We worked together on many, many issues there, and I always felt the strength of Joe, that he was there. He was there for me, and he was there for everybody, but he never had an unkind word to say about anybody. And he was constantly interacting. And as Paul said, Krikorian, at the funeral yesterday, everybody that was there when the funeral was happening on Monday, from different parts of his life, and it was just like when Joe would walk in a room, he would connect with everybody in the room. He had a line for this one and that one. Before you hear it, the whole room was right onto Joe's face, and we felt that energy on Monday in that church. It was a remarkable experience, which will always stay with me and will always give me the strength as I continue forward in this particular role I'm in now. Many of you know I have a prayer every morning that I say and meditate over, and in it I bring in those who have passed through my life, who have moved on. And now Joe is in a prominent spot, which will continue to watch my back as I continue to do this political thing. So Joe will always be with us. He's an extraordinary human being, and it's a sad thing, but we all die, and all we have is the moment, and we need to cherish the moments we have with everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
I would just like to comment on a couple of things that I think I always remember Joe, and he had the most unique invitations to his events. You would wait at the mailbox to see what was this year's theme as he invited you to some activity. It didn't really dawn on me that he was really sick because he's kind of larger-than-life until I went to Denver for the DNC, and he wasn't there. And you went to the dinner, and you looked around, and the first thing you thought about is, where's Joe? And then you realize, Joe must be really ill not to be here because that was kind of his mainstay of bringing L.A. elected officials together at the Democratic, not Democratic, but the National League of Cities. So I will always cherish the fact that he also was probably the most positive person I've ever met. No matter what the issue was, when you saw him, he had a positive statement. He was always seeking you out to say something, making you feel a part of whatever was going on. He did not allow people to stand to the side. Everybody had to be interactive, and that's the kind of memories I'll always have of him.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, Mr. Zine, and then Mr. Alcon.
Quick tidbit that came to my mind. Joe would send me clippings of newspaper articles or something in a magazine with my name in it with a little personal note. I mean, he did that. He was the only person I never know who's done that consistently, and I always referred to him as Uncle Joe because he reminded me of my Uncle Joe, who was kind and considerate and very caring. So I just want to add those two things. I always, when I saw him, I'd say, hey, Uncle Joe, how you doing? And then I always remember those clippings, Joe Sorrell, clippings of this, that, and the other. God bless Joe Sorrell.
Mr. Alcon.
Joe, Joe was the kind of lobbyist that you never wanted to oppose, but in our business, we know that there isn't a lobbyist that we don't have to oppose at some time. And, but he was, he was a formidable opponent, always respectful, always give you the facts, pro and con, which is what good advocates should do. But he was also a man who cared deeply about Los Angeles. In fact, I've said that when you think of people who have shaped Los Angeles, you don't think of the Joe Sorrels of the world, but you think of politicians and the like. But in fact, Joe Sorrell, over the last 40 years, has contributed to shaping Los Angeles as much as anybody. And I want to share a couple of anecdotes. First of all, he was involved in my first election for the other side. And he, the interesting thing about Joe, it wasn't, it wasn't a dislike for me or anything like that. It was a commitment to what he believed was the institutional wisdom that the other candidate was going to prevail. And so when, when, when I won, and it indicated a different trend that was emerging from the northeast San Fernando Valley, he recognized that, he learned from it, and he used it in many, I think he's probably told everybody about why he no longer did campaigns other than judges' campaigns. But the other anecdote, the other thing about Joe was, he knew how to enjoy life. I mean, everybody would want to go to his parties. And I remember in, in the 90s, the Democratic Convention, and he had this huge party. And in fact, I'll confess that we were up till wee hours of the morning, and I had a council meeting the next day. So knowing that, that he was tighter with John Farrell than anybody other than John's wife, I had him write me a note, and it actually said, please excuse Richard for being tardy. He was, he was partying with me till the wee hours of the morning, and I flew in, I actually got here at 10 o'clock, I showed the note to John. He said, Richard, go sit down and be quiet. And, and we conducted our business. But Joe was, was an institution, an icon in City Hall, and his organization will remain so. And he was also just a great guy, a nice person who cared about people, and although he didn't show it, you know, he wasn't extremely a passionate or a hugger or anything like that, but he had a deep affection for people in general, and, and he will be missed. He will be greatly missed.
That'll be all members on the adjourned motion for Joe Sorrell. Mr. Weiser.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I also ask that we adjourn today in honor of Sri Daya Mata, who recently passed away at the age of 96. I'm sure that Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Reyes would also like to join me on this. Daya Mata was one of the first female Hindu leaders in the United States and enjoyed unusual longevity in her position as spiritual and administrative head of a South Realization Fellowship, which emphasizes yoga and meditation as paths to God. Born as Fay Wright in Salt Lake City in 1914, she was descended from a prominent Mormon family. Her grandfather, Abraham Reister Wright Jr., helped design the historic Mormon Tabernacle in Utah. Daya Mata became enchanted by a Hindu mystic. As a teenager, I went to lead the Los Angeles-based South Realization Fellowship for 55 years. Daya Mata, whose name is in Sanskrit, means mother of compassion, was the third president of the South Realization Fellowship, a worldwide organization founded in 1920 by Indian yoga master Paramahansa Yogananda. She was known as a faithful interpreter of his teachings. Dedicated to the harmony of all religions, the Fellowship has more than 600 temples and meditation centers around the world, including its lake shrine in Pacific Palisades and sprawling headquarters northeast of downtown in Mount Washington. Sri Daya Mata leaves no immediate survivors. A viewing will be held at Forest Lawn Memorial Parking, Lando, Thursday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. A public memorial service to honor her will be held at 4:00 p.m. this Sunday at the Pasadena Civic Auditorium, located at 300 East Green Street in Pasadena. May she rest in peace, just as she lived her life in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Carrick.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Harold Katz, and his family is here in the council chambers with us today. Mr. Katz was a founding member of the Century City Chamber of Commerce and led the organization as its president in 1972 and 1973. He was very active in the Los Angeles community, serving as a director of the Los Angeles Business Council, as chairman of transportation and planning, chairman of the Los Angeles Citizens Advisory Redevelopment Project Committee, director and founder of the nonprofit Skid Road Development Corporation, director and former vice president of the Variety Club Children's Charities, co-chairman of five telethons and pre-telethon dinners, and a member of the advisory board to the Community Relations Committee of the Jewish Federation Council of Greater Los Angeles. Furthermore, Mr. Katz was named Century City Man of the Year in 1972 and 2007. His commitment and dedication to these organizations and his community were unwavering, and he will be truly missed by his family, by our community, and the Century City Chamber Board.
Thank you. All members on the adjourned motion, Mr. Katz. Mr. Rosendahl.
Quick comment. I want to thank you for sharing him with us all these years. He made a huge difference in all of our lives and in the community. May he rest in peace.
Any other adjourned motions, colleagues?
Thank you.
That concludes this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.